Please take your seats, the meeting is about to begin. Please stand by, we are going on air in 5, 4, 3, 2, 1.
Good afternoon, welcome to our commission meeting, presentations and awards. No substantive items today, but certainly a joyous and festive presentations and awards. Thank you for joining. I want to thank you all for being here. For whoever missed it yesterday, by the way, we had a really, really impressive pin ceremony, giving out awards to our dedicated employees, staff, directors. People have been here 35 years, 30 years, 25 years. It's really incredible to see the dedication. And sometimes in this business of city management, it can get tense and difficult, but know that our residents, and I said this yesterday when I spoke, our residents are very appreciative of the work, not only that we do, because we're sort of the face of the city, but the work that every one of our city employees does. And we're all just trying to make our city even better, but we hear all the time, we live in paradise, and our residents know we live in paradise. We're very fortunate to live in Miami Beach, and we're just trying to make it better and better. So truly thank you from the bottom of my heart for all the work. I'm talking to the city employees now for all the work that you do, and keep up the great work, and it's appreciated. Speaking of that, I actually wanted to, I have these certificates here. I've been meaning to do this for a little while, but on November 28th, we had inauguration, and several of us sitting up here were inaugurated. Commissioner Joe Magazine, Commissioner Tanya Bott, Commissioner David Suarez, and me. So we actually pulled that off, and it really was impressive. This room was packed, it was overcrowded, there's a lot that goes into that, and we
Please take, please take your seats. The meeting is about to begin. Please take your seats. The meeting is about to begin. Please stand by. We are going on air in five, four, three, two, one.
Good afternoon. Welcome to our commission meeting, presentations and awards. No substantive items today, but certainly a joyous and festive presentations and awards. Thank you for, for joining. Want to thank you all for being here. For whoever missed it yesterday, by the way, we had a really, really impressive pin ceremony, giving out awards to our dedicated employees, staff, directors. People have been here 35 years, 30 years, 25 years. It's really incredible to see the dedication. And sometimes in this business of city management, it can get, it can get tense and difficult, but know that our residents, and I said this yesterday when I spoke, our residents are very appreciative of the work, not only that we do, because we're sort of the face of the city, but the work that every one of our city employees does. And we're all just trying to get, make our city even better, but we hear all the time. We live in paradise, and our residents know we live in paradise. We're very fortunate to live in Miami Beach, and we're just trying to make it better and better. So truly thank you from the bottom of my heart for all the work. I'm talking to the city employees now for all the work that you do and keep up the great work, and it's appreciated. Speaking of that, I actually wanted to, I have these certificates here. I've been meaning to do this for a little while, but on November 28th, we had inauguration, and several of us sitting up here were inaugurated. Commissioner Joe Magazine, Commissioner Tanya Bott, Commissioner David Suarez, and me. So we actually pulled that off, and it really was impressive. This room was packed, it was overcrowded. There's a lot that goes into that, and we did not use any outside consultants. We didn't hire a company, which is often you would do for an event that we don't usually do in our commission chambers. It was all done in-house, and it was, it was flawless, it was tasteful. Everyone who came here was, told me how impressed they were, not so much with us, but with the way, the way the inauguration, with us too maybe, but, but really, really much appreciated. So I wanted to hand out these certificates, but maybe we could do a photo with everyone. I think you know who you are, anyone who was involved in putting that inauguration together. I think it would be a great time to do a picture. Does that work? All right. Actually, let's do the pledge of allegiance. I'm going to ask Blake Govan, my new aide, who just started last week, and I'm going to ask him to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You know what? Let's go around, let's go around here to take the picture, if that's all right.
Usually that's my job, I'm usually the one going around fixing people's cars. How we doing, Alex?
You're good.
Perfect. We can do one here. Look here, one, two, three. One more. Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, there's going to be plenty of photo ops today. The first proclamation, Commissioner Alex Fernandez, proclamation to recognize February as Black History Month in the city of Miami Beach. Beautiful event, by the way, at Muhammad Ali exhibit on Washington Avenue, though. That really, really was special.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'd like to call up the members of the Black Affairs Advisory Committee, because as we come to the close of February, it's our privilege to reflect on the significance of Black History Month and the profound impact it has in our city of Miami Beach. Throughout this month, we have had the opportunity to honor and celebrate the rich heritage, the remarkable achievements and invaluable contributions of Black Americans to our nation's history. Black History Month serves as a poignant reminder of the struggles and triumphs of Black Americans throughout history and the enduring legacy they have left on our society. It's a time to recognize the countless individuals who often facing adversity and discrimination have made significant strides in the fight of equality, for justice, and in the name of human rights. And right here in Miami Beach, we pride ourselves on being a welcoming and inclusive community where people of all backgrounds and cultures are embraced. We are committed to creating a safe and welcoming environment where everyone can live, they can work, enjoy everything that this city has to offer. And I want to take a moment to express heartfelt gratitude to the dedicated public servants and community leaders who continue to make positive impacts in our city. Individuals like Raquel Williams, our very first Black Assistant City Manager in the city of Miami Beach, and incredible leaders. And great leaders like Wayne Jones, the very first Black Police Chief in our city's history. They elevate us, they bring pride and honor to our community, and they embody the spirit of leadership, excellence, and service that define our community. And I also want to commend the Washington Avenue Business Improvement District for hosting the landmark tribute event honoring the unparalleled legacy of Muhammad Ali. And this was truly a powerful reminder of the transformative power of sport and enduring impact of cultural icons like Ali in our society. And on this occasion, it's also proper to celebrate leaders that inspire us and leaders who fight in our community, like Glendon Hall and all the members, and all the members of the Miami Beach Black Affairs Advisory Committee for their relentless advocacy and dedication. And Glendon, I want to recognize you, because you truly are dedicated to this mission. You work with all your heart as a leader in our community, and I want to recognize you to say a few words on this occasion.
Thank you very much. You're so kind, Alex. This year was very eventful, because we had so many different events, more than any time before. And I want to make sure that I take a shout out to, you know, John and Cindy, Parks Department, did a fantastic job for the Black History Month celebration, which we honored, and gave a award to Christopher Mitchell, Detective Christopher Mitchell, as was an honoree. And also to the other different events, the Vegan Fest, we had, you know, the Muhammad Ali event, which was fantastic. We have to mention Troy Wright on that. He did a fantastic job. Okay, yes, the Film Festival. And we also, you know, this is, this is not the end. Of course, we have things coming up, like we have the Creole Festival coming up, we have ABFF, we have the Legacy Event is going to be coming up in May, and the Miami Takeover. So as we know, Black History is not just one month, it's 365, 24/7. So we want to make sure that's continuous all through the year. But we appreciate the fact that the city is now embracing this more and celebrating this more, and we're very, very grateful for that. Thank you.
And so, Mr. Mayor, on behalf of this body, on behalf of our community and our residents, it's my honor to declare the month of February as Black History Month in the city of Miami Beach.
I think Kristen, you had?
I just wanted to say, in, for our history, because some people might not know, that in 1960, when we were doing the lunch counter sit-ins, it was really a group of Jewish women from the city of Miami Beach that decided to organize and go downtown and sit at the lunch counter in Burdine's downtown and make a statement in 1960. And we really have always been at the forefront of human rights in the city of Miami Beach. And sure, we have had some bumps. I have been in this room when the ACLU and the N double ACP is screaming at us as a body, but overall, I think with this committee and the progress that we've seen, and the beautiful Muhammad Ali exhibit on Fifth Street that all of us, the majority of us, I believe, were all there on Sunday, it was such, it was such a wonderful energy. And I encourage our residents to go and see that exhibit, because it's still going to be there honoring Muhammad Ali's, was it his 60th? 60th anniversary from the day that he beat Sonny Liston in a fight. He was Cassius Clay, he beat Sonny Liston, and shortly thereafter, he became Muhammad Ali. And we have to remember this as part of our history. So I'm so happy to, you know, to commemorate Black History Month in the city of Miami Beach. So important. Thank you, guys.
Okay, we're going to go to presentation three, the key to the city for Lieutenant Octavio Toby Rabello for his exceptional work with the Miami Beach Police Department. This is Commissioner Fernandez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So today we gather to honor not just a distinguished officer, Toby's journey throughout three decades of service is truly a testament to his unwavering commitment to duty, his exemplary leadership, and his profound impact in our community. From the outset of his career, 1994, Toby demonstrated an unparalleled passion for law enforcement and a natural aptitude for leadership. Rising swiftly through the ranks, Toby's dedication to excellence saw him named Platoon Leader for his academy class, a role he embraced with vigor and determination. And throughout his 30-year tenure, right here in the city of Miami Beach, Toby has consistently exceeded expectations, earning accolades and commendations for his outstanding performance and unwavering dedication to duty. Toby's leadership has been characterized by a commitment to promoting brotherhood and fostering a culture of professionalism within our Miami Beach Police Department. Whether as a patrol sergeant, a robbery sergeant, or as a training unit commander, Toby has led by example, inspiring those around him to strive for excellence and to always put the needs of the community first as a true public servant. One of Toby's most significant contributions has been his transformative leadership of the Community Affairs Unit, and under his guidance, the unit has surpassed all expectations, earning praise from officials and community members alike. Toby's commitment to community policing and his unwavering dedication to serving the needs of our residents have made a lasting impact on the safety and well-being of our city. And I'd like to recognize Chief Jones and Deputy Chief Acosta to say a few words on this, on this incredible leader. There's few times do we have such dedicated individuals who serve our community for such great, with such great tenure, 30 years of service, but do so with, with such a level of dedication and distinguished career. And so Chief, I wish to recognize you to say a few words.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. I'll tell you, I, this is certainly a bittersweet moment for me personally. My friend is retiring. This is so, so warranted, this recognition, and not because of the three decades representing his entire adult life of service to this community, but because, in my opinion, also because of the sacrifice of Erica, his wife, Justin, his boy, and Sophie, his daughter, because they were left at home many, many nights on holiday weekends, when Toby was here leading the men and women of this organization, leaving his mark on this organization. I, I am saddened that he's leaving today, and this is where the bitter comes in, because he takes with him years and years of experience and expertise, leaving a gap in the organization, big shoes to fill. I am happy and excited for him to start this new chapter of his life. Erica and his kids finally get their dad to be home with them. No more weekends away from home, no more holidays away from home, no missed birthdays or anniversaries or holiday parties. And so, congratulations, this is well deserved.
I just want to say a few words. So this is very special for me personally.
He's going to cry. Can't make me cry now.
When it comes to, when it comes to this stuff, I'm a little emotional, but 30 years, it's incredible. If I can have his family just come up here behind him, just to be part of this moment with him. We've known each other for 28 years, and throughout our tenure together and our, in our professional life together, I began to know Toby on a personal level. And what drew me to Toby was, was his spirit and his personality, and how much he loved people, how much he loved others, and his, his way of just building people up around him. And I was drawn to that, and we became friends, and in fact, we're best friends, and we've been best friends for so many years. Our families enjoy time together, we watched our children grow together. Toby mentored me throughout the years, and it doesn't matter what rank you are, it didn't matter where we were in our career, he mentored me as a professional and as a friend. And I'm really, really excited for him today. And I know we have other promotional, other awards scheduled for today, but I just want to leave everyone with this idea of who he is. When he wakes up every single day of his career, he woke up with the thought and the mindset of making his father proud. His father, George Rabello. And I know how much this means to him, to keep the legacy of his father, to honor his father, his name. So when he came to work, he gave more than 110%. He dedicated his life to this city and to the residents, and he left his family at home many a night. So I personally, Toby, I just want to thank you for the unwavering friendship through thick and thin, through thick and thin, through the ups and downs, keeping my head in the game. I'm proud of you reaching this moment in your career, in your life, with your family, being able to be together, enjoy the West Coast of Florida, where we're going to miss you on this side of the shop until I get there soon. Congratulations to you, to your family, to the Rabello family and the Rabello legacy, and to the men and women that he led that are sitting right there on the second row, his last unit that he was a part of, are here today to support him, because they believe in him, and he took care of them, and he loved them. So congratulations, Toby. Proud of you.
First and foremost, I want to thank God for everything that is possible through Him. I want to give a special thanks to Mr. Mayor, Madam Manager, Commissioner Fernandez, and Monica, and all the commissioners present here today. Any of the accolades I've earned in my career has been a byproduct, mostly because of the people that have worked with me. No one's ever worked for me. They work with me. And I've taken pride in mentoring people and passing on my knowledge, and Chief, and DC, you don't have to worry about my knowledge going anywhere, I'm going to stay on as a reserve or not, or whatever, and if I'm ever needed, I'm always going to be here for this city, because I've always said, I owe this city a hell of a lot more than it owes me. My family's been blessed with a beautiful life, and it's because of this city and the job that I was so fortunate to get. I was working in my dad's restaurant, and Miami Beach officer was taking a break from court, eating breakfast at Ranchaluna Restaurant, which is where I got my work ethic from my father, and of course, my mother. And he said, hey, Miami Beach is a-
Because we ask so much of the incredible force of men and women who will be out on the street. And so many years, individuals like yourself and others have worked selflessless the streets of Miami Beach, putting the community's safety ahead of your own, putting others' lives ahead of your own, and prioritizing the public service to the city of Miami Beach ahead of the interests of your own family. That as we honor you today with this key of the city, that every officer of this city know that we're honoring you as well, that we're grateful for the sacrifices you'll be making, and knowing that you are acting under the mentorship of great individuals like Lieutenant Rabello, who have paved the way for other great public servants who serve in this law enforcement agency. And so we honor you today, but every officer needs to know that we honor you as well, and we thank you for your service.
Thank you. Well said. I'll just add, you know, we use the terms Alfa Bravo a lot, but those 12-hour shifts every day, day in and day out, obviously has a major impact on every officer, their families. And like Commissioner Fernandez, and I know we all believe, we truly do appreciate your sacrifice and service. Thank you.
Let's get Scoot this way a little bit. Everybody squeeze in, please. You might have a better chance from here. You might have a better shot from behind the podium, like the camera does. Just get everybody to Scoot a little bit more this way. Scoot a little bit more.
I got him on. Okay, guys, everybody look over here. Can you guys move in a little bit more in? Perfect. All right. Look over here first. I have a few cameras to bear with me. This one, one, two, three. Perfect.
You're good.
I got it.
Talk good.
Thank you.
Commissioner Laura Dominguez, certificate of recognition for Dr. Anika Aravallo.
Thank you, Mayor. So I met Dr. Anika Aravallo last year when I had pulled a hamstring, and I went to ASR in Sunset Harbor and was going for treatment each week. And it was around the fall time, and the doctor said to me, I hear there's a Miami Beach pickleball tournament. I'd like to volunteer and be the doctor there to help with injuries. And to the rave reviews of Cindy and the Parks Department, the doctor was amazing. So I wanted to give a special recognition and also read a little bit about her background. So Dr. Aravallo has spent over 10 years in physical therapy, working with orthopedic and sports injuries, as well as patients with complex spine disorders and pelvic floor dysfunction. Her passion for treating running injuries led her to pursue her coaching license to help runners reach their goals safely while going through therapy and teaching them skills to be efficient runners in the long term. Dr. Aravallo earned her undergraduate and doctorate degrees from the University of Miami. While an undergraduate at UM, she was a member of the track and cross-country team for all four years. She continues to be an avid runner, competing in marathons, ultra-marathons, and triathlons. Her passion and extensive history in competitive athletics inspired her to become a physical therapist to help others get back to doing what they love. She embodies a holistic and conservative approach to patient care, believing in hands-on, personalized treatment. And so the city of Miami Beach recognizes Dr. Aravallo for volunteering in the inaugural South Beach Slam Free Amateur Doubles Pickleball Tournament held on Lincoln Road, November 17th through 19th, because her efforts really helped many of the participants that had injuries and strains and all of the above. And the doctor is a proud resident of Miami Beach, and she loves to call this beautiful city home. Thank you so much, doctor. I really appreciate that you volunteered, that you helped serve our city, and congratulations.
Thank you, guys, so much for this honor, especially Commissioner Dominguez. It really is, I've been doing this for 10 years, and I wake up every day with the heart of servanthood, because I really feel God has blessed me with that gift. So to be able to serve my new home of Miami Beach, it really is a privilege. So thank you again for the honor.
Thank you. Come up and take a picture.
Can we get everybody to Scoot a little bit more this way so everybody could be centered?
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Dominguez. Our next proclamation, number five. Proclamation for Sister Cities Representative Lucy Delgado, sponsored by Vice Mayor Kristen Rosen-Gonzalez, co-sponsored by Commissioner Bott and Commissioner Dominguez.
Where's this beautiful woman, Lucy Delgado? Can you come up here, please? In 1977, Lucy Delgado immigrated to Miami Beach from Colombia, and she never looked back and has never stopped working as hard as she possibly can. I met Lucy about a month ago when you reached out to us and invited us to Cozumel, one of our sister cities, to celebrate the 150th year of Carnival in Cozumel, Mexico. And it was to my surprise that when we arrived in Cozumel, the entire island knows Lucy Delgado, because when she came here in 1977, she started a travel agency. And for those of you who don't know, they used to bring junkets, people from Cozumel and places like Santa Marta, Colombia, all over the Caribbean, to Miami shopping. Unfortunately, we've recently learned that now they're going to Orlando instead of Miami Beach, so hopefully we can change that. But it was a wonderful, and it was a wonderful experience to spend four days with you in Cozumel and really see what it is to see a strong woman who, you know, immigrated to Miami Beach, started a travel agency, brought these groups of people, forged these friendships, and then started Sister Cities and made both Cozumel and Santa Marta, Colombia, our sister cities. And by the way, she didn't just make us sister cities. At one point, she even brought a marching band from Miami Beach to Carnival in Cozumel. We sent a fire truck to Cozumel, Mexico because of Lucy Delgado. And by the way, they're waiting for another truck, so if we have at some point an older truck, we know that there are people in Cozumel, Mexico that could definitely, they still have our truck, by the way, that we donated 20 years ago. They are currently using it, and it is a source of pride. And this is all because of you, Ms. Delgado. And I would tell you that we arrived in Cozumel, and we were tired, and it was the first night of Carnival. And I've never seen, and I kept asking her, Lucy, are you tired? Maybe we should go home. She never complained, never said she was tired, and actually, I've never seen this happen before, but she literally was falling asleep while walking. And I finally had to stop her and say, I think you're falling asleep, and we should probably go back, because you were never going to admit that you were tired. You were never going to say we should go home. You were there, you were there to work and forge relationships and celebrate, and we are so lucky to have you here in Miami Beach. And I know that before we do the actual proclamation, this is co-sponsored by my colleague, Commissioner Bott, and I would like to cede the floor to her so she can also say some words.
Thank you, Commissioner Rosen-Gonzalez. Hola, Lucy, ¿qué tal? I echo everything that my colleague said, but I also want to really highlight the import that Lucy places on the Sister Cities relationship. She has been an advocate, a staunch ally, and a champion of the Sister Cities relationship for 32 years, even when our own city government dismissed it as being unimportant. She, as my colleague said, has relationships all over the island of Cozumel with people in every possible facet of work, from the highest reaches of government to, you know, the folks who are serving food. But she really understands the power. You really understand the power of what it can be, the cultural exchange, youth mentorship, opening eyes to different ways of thinking and working, expanding horizons for people who didn't think they'd ever see anything different. And the power that that can provide to transform lives and the trajectory of people's careers and the way they think. And I think that is remarkable, and you are the Energizer Bunny. You absolutely, there's nothing that you said no to. You were up later than everybody and up earlier than everybody, and fueled by the passion for what you have built and what you have kept aflame, kept a light for us while we have been figuring out how to move forward. So muchas gracias.
And so now, Commissioner Dominguez, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you. Lucy, I met you about a month ago as well, and I was so impressed with how much you knew about the Sister Cities relationship between Cozumel and Miami Beach. And you have photos and books and all of these background stories that we really need to get copies of and get them back into our city. I've been working on bringing the Sister Cities back to the city of Miami Beach to be run by our city, and your stories and your background have been invaluable. Congratulations and thank you.
So wait, an important part before you say some words, because now, therefore do we, as mayor and commissioner of the city of Miami Beach, hereby proclaim February 28th, 2024, as Lucy Delgado Day in the city of Miami Beach. Congratulations.
Thank you. First, I am so happy living in Miami Beach, and I thank you, Mr. Fernandez, because he, two years ago, we want to try making a lot of things, and he gave it to you, my name and everything, and I'm so happy. The program of the Sister Cities, I think, is the best. We have a beautiful Sister Cities, not only in Cozumel, Colombia, Ica, Israel, Japan, and we have the first for the young group, we have the overall program in the 98. We are so happy, and I try one word a lot with you, and I invite everybody, because Cozumel waiting for everybody, believe me. Yes or no? Right? Thank you. Thank you very much.
No, you're good there. You might get a better shot from here, though, if they get too wide.
The whole island knows Lucy.
The whole island loves Miami Beach.
They really do.
Okay, we have two more. They're both my presentations. We have a proclamation recognizing March 2024 as Collectural Cancer Awareness Month. And actually, I found out about this from a Commissioner in Aventura, Michael Stern, who happens to be with us today, and I'm going to call him up in a minute. But Michael, I should say Commissioner Stern, is actually reaching out not only to Miami Beach, but all 34 cities in Miami Dade County, and I understand he's going to Washington, DC tomorrow, but I'm actually going to call you up. I'm going to read a little bit from the proclamation after you speak, but I want to hear from you. And also, I'm also, after you speak, I'd love to call up Mar- And the power that that can provide to transform lives and the trajectory of people's careers and the way they think. And I think that is remarkable, and you are the Energizer Bunny. You absolutely, there's nothing that you said no to. You were up later than everybody and up earlier than everybody and fueled by the passion for what you have built and what you have kept aflame, kept a light for us while we have been figuring out how to move forward. So muchas gracias.
And so now, Commissioner Dominguez, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you. Lucy, I met you about a month ago as well, and I was so impressed with how much you knew about the Sister Cities relationship between Cozumel and Miami Beach. And you have photos and books and all of these background stories that we really need to get copies of and get them back into our city. I've been working on bringing the Sister Cities back to the city of Miami Beach to be run by our city. And your stories and your background have been invaluable. Congratulations and thank you.
So wait, an important part before you say some words. Because now, therefore do we, as mayor and commissioner of the city of Miami Beach, hereby proclaim February 28, 2024, as Lucy Delgado Day in the city of Miami Beach. Congratulations.
Thank you. First, I am so happy living in Miami Beach. And I thank you, Mr. Fernandez, because he, two years ago, we want to try making a lot of things, and he gave it to you, my name and everything. And I'm so happy, the program of the Sister Cities, I think, is the best. We have a beautiful Sister Cities, not only in Cozumel, Colombia, Ica, Israel, Japan. And we have the first, for the young group, we have the overall program in the 98. We are so happy, and I try one word a lot with you. And I invite everybody, because Cozumel waiting for everybody, believe me. Yes or no? Right? Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, we have two more. They're both my presentations. We have a proclamation recognizing March 2024 as Collectorial Cancer Awareness Month. And actually, I found out about this from a Commissioner in Aventura, Michael Stern, who happens to be with us today, and I'm going to call him up in a minute. But Michael, I should say Commissioner Stern, is actually reaching out not only to Miami Beach, but all 34 cities in Miami Dade County. And I understand he's going to Washington DC tomorrow. But I'm actually going to call you up. I'm going to read a little bit from the proclamation after you speak, but I want to hear from you. And also, I'm also, after you speak, I'd love to call up Marcia Monserrat as well to speak. Thank you. Come on up, Commissioner. Thank you. Thank you for being here.
Want me to say something now?
Please.
Okay. First of all, thank you so much. Colorectal cancer, colon cancer, does not get the spotlight it needs. By the year 2030, in six years, colon cancer is going to be the leading cause of deaths for people under 50. Let me say that again. It's going to take the most lives of people under 50 by 2030. So it's going to be the number one cause of cancer deaths. And what most people don't know about it, because the spotlight is not on colon cancer, is that it's preventable and it's treatable with a colonoscopy. I am a stage four colon cancer survivor. And I did not plan on being here. If I would have gotten a colonoscopy when I should have, I would not be standing here. Unfortunately, I didn't. It's a very simple test. And luckily, being Commissioner, I get a chance to have a little bit more of a higher platform. So I feel it's my obligation to spread the word. And there are 34 municipalities, and about 25 of them have already committed, so I'm almost there. But going to DC in 10 days, and that's okay. And my goal there is to basically say I have all 34 proclamations, and there's 250, 300 survivors all over the country. We're going to Capitol Hill, meeting with representatives to ask for more funding and more awareness. And I want to thank you for the opportunity. But really, if you haven't gotten a colonoscopy, get it. They lowered the age to 45. There is no doubt, they will be lowering the age again. I wouldn't be surprised, in the next three or four years, it'll be 40. Get a colonoscopy. It's an easy test that could save your life.
Thank you. Thank you. And God bless. Thank you, Marcia.
And I don't have anything different to say than Commissioner Stern. But for those of you who know, or those of you that don't know, 2022, I guess late 2022, our insurance company sends us emails all the time about some, whether it's an app or something that they want you to try for free for a month. And I'm the sucker that always says, yes, I'll try that app for free for a month. And this time, they sent us a newsletter that said, it was about colorectal cancer. And they talked about how they would send us a free colon guard if anybody wanted to try it, and I did. And by the end of that next week, I got a nurse call, a call from a nurse advising me that my colon guard tested positive and that I should get a colonoscopy. Now, I was probably four years, three and a half years kind of late on my colonoscopy, because no one wants to do it. I know Commissioner Stern described it as a very easy test. It's yuck. It's disgusting. But it is really a simple test. And so that was the only way to know for sure. And right away, after my colonoscopy, the surgeon said, look, it's not my place to tell you, but I know that you have cancer. And so it started at a two weeks, like this two-week spin in my head that I can't even describe. And I'm very fortunate. I had the city manager making calls for me. I had the previous city manager making calls for me. I had everyone making calls for me. And I was able to have, between my colonoscopy and my surgery, where I had over 11 inches of my intestines removed, was only a two-week span. So I literally had cancer for two weeks. And I was very fortunate. And I know so many people that aren't as fortunate as I am. My surgeon was able to get clean margins, and I did not have to have chemo or radiation. But I know that I'm lucky. And I only know that, and I'm only in that position because I got a colonoscopy. And so I tell anyone, and I will say it as often as I can, get a colonoscopy, because it could be, it's a simple process. It's yuck. But it's the only way to know for sure. And colorectal cancer is a dangerous disease if it is not detected. And so get screened. That's all I have to say. Get screened, get screened, get screened, get screened. Thank you.
So Marcia and Commissioner Stern, you covered a lot from the proclamation. So I'm going to pick the parts that you have not covered yet. It is, colon cancer is the second-leading cause of cancer deaths. You mentioned about the estimation for 2030. You know, we were just talking about Black History Month. So African-Americans are 20% more likely to be diagnosed with colon cancer and about 40% more likely to die from the disease than other groups. It's expected to account for 11% of cancer deaths among Hispanic men and 9% of cancer deaths for Hispanic women. These are big numbers. In 2023, there are approximately 153,000 new cases and 52,000 deaths from colon cancer. The national goal established by the National Collectorial Cancer Roundtable is to strive to increase timely cancer screening rates to 80% in every community for all Americans. Observing Cancer Awareness Month during the month of March would provide a special opportunity to increase awareness and offer education on the importance of early detection and screening of collectorial cancer. Now, therefore do we, as the mayor and commissioners of the city of Miami Beach, hereby proclaim March 2024 as Collectorial Cancer Awareness Month in the city of Miami Beach. Thank you. Actually have one more, and then Commissioner Magazine has one. Even though we haven't met, this one is actually very special for me. I'm going to tell you why in a minute. We're going to do a proclamation recognizing Melissa April Dotell as 2025, 2020, 25? Yeah, 2025, it's for next year, Teacher of the Year. That is impressive. Come on up while we do this. How many public schools are there in Miami Dade County? I'm putting everyone on the spot here. 250? I looked up, I saw there's 331,000 students. There's 34,000 employees, 250 schools. And you are the Miami Dade County Teacher of the Year. That's impressive. And it made me, I'm sure we all do. I started thinking about my first-grade teacher, second grade, and on and on. It's funny, I find I could always remember my first and second-grade teachers, their names. And that the more closer in time, like in high school, I can't remember the names. So your students are going to always remember your names. And I'll tell you, one of the reasons it's near and dear is that the day that it was announced that you won the award, my phone was literally blowing up. It's amazing how proud people were in Miami Beach, that their school, they know you. Most of them didn't even have students in your class. It just, it brought home a special prideness in our city and who we are and how important education is. So thank you for that. I'd love to hear from you before I actually read from the proclamation.
Good evening. I'm deeply touched by the honor bestowed upon me by the city of Miami Beach. The support and recognition from this wonderful community has truly transformed me. My journey as an educator has been shaped by the nurturing embrace of my North Beach Elementary family. They've been my pillars, lifting me up as I've grown and flourished in my role. Not long ago at North Beach Elementary, I spearheaded a project called Carton to Garden, where students repurposed cafeteria milk cartons and created pots out of them. We planted seeds in them. The response from our community was nothing short of extraordinary. Parents eagerly joined, rolling up their sleeves to help plant seeds and paint milk cartons alongside our students. The Miami Beach Botanical Gardens generously supplied seeds, and our wonderful PTA provided much-needed gardening supplies. It was a true team effort, with every member of our school community contributing their time and resources to make our project a success. I must also extend my appreciation to our administrative team, whose open-mindedness and willingness to embrace projects like Carton to Garden paved the way for our success. As they say, it takes a village, and our village showed up full force. Our collective efforts paid off in more than one way. Not only did our project flourish, but we were also honored to receive a $1,000 grant. This shows what happens when we come together to support education and inspire our students. But this is just one of many examples of the magic that happens when our community comes together. Our amazing Miami Beach officers, who keep us safe, not only read, but read books to our students, but present important lessons to our students. Shout out to Officer Jeannie, my kindergarten cop. Our local businesses support our many, many school events, and our school volunteers are invaluable. I had one school volunteer who taught me everything I know about monarch butterflies and helped me care for the butterflies in our school garden, forever changing the scope of my teaching. Every year since she taught me, I've nurtured the monarch butterflies through all stages with my students, deepening our connection to nature and instilling environmental responsibility. It's moments like these that truly highlight the strength of our community. Behind every success, there's a supportive family, and I've been blessed with a very large one that has been my guiding light. Our family's passion for education runs deep. Several of us are educators. They've shaped me into the person I am. As I accept this proclamation, I feel a deep sense of responsibility to give back to the city that has given me so much. Like a gardener tending to a vibrant garden, I will nurture the growth of this community with knowledge and compassion. To the city of Miami Beach and all who have supported me, thank you. Let's continue to soar together, embracing the beauty of transformation and the power of education. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Beautiful. Commissioner Fernandez, you're co-sponsoring with me if you wanted to say something.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And it brings such great honor to our community. You know, when we talk about our community, we highlight so many features about our community. Its natural beauty, its climate, beach walks. But we often don't talk enough about our schools and the incredible individuals who labor in our schools, who inspire and touch the lives of those most important in our community, the children of our community, those for whom our law enforcement strives to keep the streets safe for, and our sanitation workers work hard day in and day out to keep the streets clean for, and those who our Parks Department makes sure that these children have activities that they can enjoy after school, and everything that we do to make sure that we're not just a wonderful place for individuals to visit or to do business in, but to raise a family. And that those children who grow up in Miami Beach wish to raise their own families here. And it all starts with the schools. And it all starts with the teachers in those schools. And so I felt compelled to join you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for your leadership in recognizing the 2025 Teacher of the Year, because you're homegrown right here in Miami Beach. Congratulations, North Beach Elementary. You make Miami Beach shine.
Commissioner Rosen Gonzalez.
As somebody who has taught for MDCPS, and I'm a current professor at Miami Dade College, I admire any teacher who goes above and beyond. And by the way, when you do these extracurriculars, there really isn't compensation. This is for the love of education, for the love of teaching. You have to cut through tremendous amounts of red tape to even accept a donation, like seeds from the botanical garden. So congratulations to you for making it happen, for working those extra hours, for loving our kids, and for being the best teacher you can be, which obviously the county is recognizing. So congratulations to you.
Thank you so much.
Yes, I want to give a shout out to the principal, Mrs. Fishman, who's in the crowd today. Commissioner Bott.
I just want to say something very quick. And my kids are now 22 and 24, so definitely not in your class. But when I moved down to Miami Beach 21 years ago with a one and a three-year-old, we looked at Miami Beach. We also looked at Hollywood, Florida. And one of the reasons why we chose Miami Beach, one of many reasons, but one of the most important, was because of the great schools. And we chose to live in Bay Shore so that we could be close to North Beach Elementary, where my girls started. So I think it's amazing that you're continuing this tradition of excellence and onward and upward.
So you've said most of it, and we've said it, but a couple of... We almost forgot the proclamation, right? You're an alumni of Miami Dade County Public Schools, which is impressive, having successfully navigated your educational journey through Coral Way K-8 Center, Carver Middle School, and Coral Gables Senior High School. Thank you for working your way to Miami Beach. You are honored as a 2025 MDCPS Teacher of the Year, a testament to your exemplary dedication and positive impact on the educational community. I mean, your background, your Erden of Master's degrees in... How do you pronounce it? Tesol?
T-Saw.
Tesol. Teaching English to speakers of other languages. And urban education. You've continued your impactful journey at North Beach Elementary School. It's a great school. Where she spent seven years teaching kindergarten, currently guides second-grade students with enthusiasm, accumulating a total of 18 years in the profession. Now, therefore do we, as the mayor and commissioners of the city of Miami Beach, hereby proclaim today, February 28, 2024, as Melissa April Dotell Day. Congratulations. Commissioner Magazine, you get to end the day off. Proclamation recognizing February 28 as Anatomy Fitness Day in the city of Miami Beach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And if I could just have the team from Anatomy come up. So why am I giving a proclamation for our city to a gym? Anatomy has become so much more than a gym for our city. I have known one of the operating partners, Mark Magna, for maybe 15 years. And I joke with him, he was a floor trainer working Equinox before I even moved down here. And after the lunch hour rush, he didn't own the gym. He didn't have equity in it. But he had pride. And he would go to the dumbbells and make sure they were all aligned. Because he strives for perfection. And I knew, looking at him right then, I wasn't sure what he would do later in life, but I knew would demand excellence. And Anatomy, while it's a gym, it is a community. It's a place where people feel comfortable, where they push themselves. They strive for excellence, just like Mark demands. And for 10... ten years, they were in their Sunset Harbor location. And the growth of Sunset Harbor was really synonymous with the growth of Anatomy. They played such a critical role. And they've since moved, just in the past few months, and they have their grand, official grand opening tomorrow, to twelve-twelve Lincoln Road, where they are in, in even more expanded, absolutely state-of-the-art facility. Anatomy has won several, multiple Best Gym in Miami awards. And Anatomy is known for recognizing, uplifting for those actively involved in the community, and contributing to the long-term project and culture of our city. They are synonymous with how I view Miami Beach. So I, I thank you all for, not only your dedication to health and fitness, but also to Miami Beach. I'll turn it over to you if you want to say a few words.
Thank you, Commissioner Magazine. It's an absolute honor to be recognized. The team is, we take great pride in, in what we do day to day. When we started this, we wanted a great fitness-wellness offering, but more than anything was about building a fitness-wellness community. And that fitness-wellness community was meant to give people a space where they can work on becoming them, their best selves, improve their mental health, improve their wellness, be better people, so they can be better Miami Beach citizens. So it's something that we will continue to take great pride in, and we will absolutely do our best to make sure Anatomy can be the core of fitness and wellness in Miami Beach. So thank you so very much.
Okay, so with that, thank you all for your continued dedication to our community. And as mayor and commissioners of the city of Miami Beach, hereby proclaim February twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-four, as Anatomy Fitness Day. So congratulations.
Thank you very much, everyone. Thank you to my colleagues for being here, and great presentations and awards. And thank you, everyone, and congratulations to everyone on today's awards and presentations. Meeting is adjourned.